You're listening to Seattle Real Estate Podcast.
Okay, so we had yet another shooting in Portland. We had six people basically get shot. One person got killed. Portland's commissioner comes up with the statement of even well, even if we had 10 officers right there on that corner, what would have happened differently? Nothing. Well, the president of the Portland's Police Association basically came out and said, hey, if we had 10 cops right there, I guarantee if 10 officers were on a corner that that shooting would not have happened. I covered this a few days ago after the shooting happened and I basically came to the same conclusion. I'm like, ah, you know, Commissioner Hardesty, I really can't agree with that statement that you made, that if there were 10 cops there that that shooting just would have gone on anyway. I don't think that is how this works. I'm pretty sure. And then when I saw this article come up and a number of you viewers sent it to me, viewers and listeners sent it to me and I'm like, yeah, I gotta pull the trigger on that one. So you've just, you've got these storylines coming out of Portland that are absolutely mind boggling. That's what we're going to cover today. If you're new here, before we dive in, if you're new here, welcome. My name is Sean Reynolds. I own a couple of real estate companies and I read the news, news that others are too afraid to take on. Maybe it's a little too controversial. I don't really care. We're just, this is what we're doing. This is how we're going. We're going to read the news. Turner again takes issue with Hardesty comments on policing. She has made, the commissioner of Portland has made some of the most incredibly mentally challenged statements that that lack complete truth that I've ever heard from like a public, somebody in public office. It's like, what are you talking about? What, where, what world are you coming from? You just don't know what you're talking about. You're throwing stuff out there that makes no sense at all. You have to have something behind your words. At least I read the news. I've got the news here to kind of back me up, right? So this is, I'm not creating the news. I'm not coming up with new storylines here. I am merely giving you, you know, some of my input as I read this stuff and some of the stuff that politicians come up with. If I came up with stuff like that and then kind of backtracked a little bit, and I'll give you some examples of that. If I did that, I would just get roasted. Plus, no, none of you would want to watch me because you're like, oh, that guy's full of crap. He just makes stuff up. Yeah. 2021 is what we're doing. In the wake of a weekend shooting in Portland's entertainment district that wounded six and left an 18 year old dead, the ongoing debate about police staffing in Portland has once again come into view. Is that shocking? Are we shocked that we're still talking about the police in Portland? No, we're still talking about it here in Seattle too. Why do we, why do we cover so much of this, you know, stuff on a real estate podcast? Cause it's about public safety, right? It's about public safety. People don't feel safe in their neighborhoods. That's not a good thing for real estate. These are easy topics to relate to real estate. You know, homeless encampments next to the freeway throwing off chunks of concrete into oncoming traffic. That's a public safety issue, isn't it? Yeah. Not having enough cops on the street to keep your streets safe. That's a problem. How about you check out the, the shootings happening in Chicago? This past weekend, they had 44 shooting incidences with 54 people shot and 11 people murdered in one. That's called a weekend. On Monday, they had another, what? I can't remember. Four shootings, 11 people shot, one murdered Tuesday. Same basic thing. The weekends are when things really get out of control. You just don't have enough cops to basically provide coverage and people are running around doing their thing willy nilly, knowing that their chances of getting away with this stuff is much higher. Not to say that all the gun violence and all the murder and all the, the crime rates going up, they are not to be blamed for defunding the police, but defunding the police and having fewer cops in the street does not help either, right? I mean, that's a little piece of the puzzle. It's a big piece of the puzzle. It's an integral piece of the puzzle. And that's why we talk about that here in the Seattle Real Estate Podcast, because it has to do with public safety. Public safety, the public going out into public being safe. Well, this gal wasn't safe. She's dead. She got shot and that's going on all the time. Michaela Marie Harris was shot and killed on Southwest Third Avenue around 2:00 AM Saturday. No one has been arrested for the shooting and no suspect information has been released. Michaela Harris will never grow up to be whatever she was going to be in life, said Portland Police Association President Daryl Turner. She'll never be able to be with her parents again and her family again. And that sucks. Turner, a longtime critic of Commissioner Joanne Hardesty leveled more criticism following her comments that more police would not have prevented this mass shooting. The deflection has to stop, Turner said. This, they have to take ownership. Joanne Hardesty also said that police are not responsible for preventing crime, that they are there just to solve the crime once it happened. This is, this is kind of the background of what Portland is working with. Difficult. Those are tricky statements to justify in real world situations. Like where if you have 10 cops on a corner and a shooting is going to happen. I, I'm not a betting guy, not very good at betting, not good at reading the, you know, over and under. Not good at figuring out what the good bet would be. I asked one of my kids, they're both better at gambling than I am. Doesn't say a lot about my parenting, but you know, I would, if I were to place a bet on if 10 cops were on a corner that a shooting was going to happen, I would place a, I'd place 90% of my bet on the fact that it would not happen. 10%, let's just leave 10% over there. Just because you might have some absolute knucklehead thinking, all right, I am Clint Eastwood. I have got this. I'm going to still make the shooting happen. We're, we're talking dirty hairy here and, um, you know, blam, 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 blam. No, I don't, I don't think that's the way it would go if you had 10 cops in the corner. Even the most ridiculous criminal is going to go. Yeah, probably not going to shoot anybody. But Portland Commissioner literally comes out and says, ah, what would happen differently? Nothing. Really? Think that one through. Just take a step back, just a quick step back. Work that one through mentally. And I think you, you might come up with some problematic reasoning in there. Hardesty, who said the shooting was just absolutely terrifying to know that happened on the street in downtown Portland, also said, this could not have been stopped by officers. I did hear the mayor say, we need more police and more training. But every time there's a community tragedy, that's the tagline we use. Let me read that again. Every time there's a community tragedy, that's the tagline we use. We need more police and more training. Well, that's probably because it's true. In my opinion, it's not the be all and end all putting a bunch of cops on the street, but it's a damn good start. I mean, that's kind of where I would start. Yeah. You need more officers. And Portland has been defunded, and I use that term from the standpoint of they've been running on a thin number of cops for years. For years. This is not an overnight thing. You look at the actual numbers that Portland Police Bureau should have per FBI statistics. They're always on the low end. They're always on the low end. And now you've got a situation where crime is going up. It's not going down. It's going up. Up, up. It's crazy. And so Hardesty goes on to say, even if we had 10 police officers on the corner downtown, what would have turned out different? Question mark. Nothing is her answer. That's literally what she thinks. Okay. Well, we know where you're coming from. I don't agree. And I think that's a ridiculous statement. That's why I'm doing an entire podcast on it. Cause this is the ridiculousness behind some of the reasoning of, ah, defund the police. It'll be okay. We'll reimagine. We'll rethink what could go wrong. Here we are. How's that working out for you? Police, you know, numbers are way down in Portland. Here's what, here's what Turner said. I can guarantee you, Turner said, if 10 police officers were standing on a corner, that shooting would not have happened. So when I read this, I'm like, yeah, I'm doing a whole podcast on that. And thank, thank you to those of you who, who sent this to me. This is pretty basic stuff, isn't it? I can guarantee you 10 police officers were standing on a corner, that shooting would not have happened. All right. If I, again, I'm not, I'm not a good betting guy. I'm not, not good. My whole life is a bet. Will I go out of business this year? Don't really know. Let's roll the dice and find out. So far, I've been pretty good. I've made it. This, you know, age 52, self-employed, most of my years, that's the extent of my gambling. But if I were to place a bet on, I can guarantee you Turner saying he's guaranteeing it. That's like 99.999% right? I mean, this is the president of the Police Association. He's guaranteeing you if 10 police officers were standing on a corner, that shooting would not have happened. I'd probably take that bet. I would, I would probably double down on that bad boy, right? I mean, just, I'd roll the dice on that one. Yep. The other one, not so much. The other one that Hardesty indicated, don't think so. Portland began seeing a drastic rise in shootings in July, 2020. That is when I first went down to Portland and checked it out and did a video and, uh, yep, I got tear gas. That was the exciting times with my son. You can see that video here on this YouTube channel. I think it's called, I got tear gassed in Portland. I don't know. Over the past year, Turner has repeatedly argued the deadly spike is directly correlated with the city's decision to disband the gun violence reduction team a month before in June, 2020. He sticks by that argument. All right. Let's look at the name of that police force. That's a group within the police department that was disbanded due to defunding of the police. The gun violence reduction team. Let's break that one down. Guns. All right. Yeah. They're using guns to kill people in Portland. We know that. Killing people and shooting people, that's violence. So we got guns and violence reduction. We want to reduce the guns and the violence, killing and shooting people. We want to reduce that. And then we've got team. We've got a group that that was their job. And we got rid of that by we, I mean, Portland got rid of that. And now they're shocked by, hey, you got a deadly spike of gun violence going on. Maybe it has to do with getting rid of the gun violence reduction team? I don't know. Betting man, again, I would say numbers would be lower if you had that team still intact. What do you think? Let me know in the comments. He sticks by that argument. This is, uh, Turner, the president of the Police Association. Mayor, Mayor Wheeler said the other day that we need a plan. This guy hits on all the quotes that I really like. We need a plan. This has been gone on, going on over a year in Portland. We, we need a plan. That's literally what the mayor of Portland has said, but that's a, that's a whole nother topic, right? That's a whole nother deal, what the mayor in Portland is doing. Mayor Wheeler should have said the other day, we need a plan, he said. They should have had a plan last year when they defunded the police and when they disbanded the gun violence reduction team. If they had a plan, maybe some of these shootings wouldn't have happened. Maybe some of these homicides wouldn't have happened. Turner said Portland residents feel hopeless and are sick of the violence. They want it to stop. They want more police officers. They want proactive police officers in our neighborhoods to keep them safe. Period. That's what the people want. You should give it to them. But here's the thing, here's the thing. Portland residents voted these people into office. They voted them into office. So you get what you pay for. That is unfortunately what you're, you're dealing with. So make that vote count at the office, at the polling office. All right. So here's another example of Turner, our main character here, the president of the Portland Police Association. Turner is saying Hardesty is part of the problem in Portland. Commissioner Hardesty accused Portland Police Bureau of starting fires during the protests. This is a story from July of, July 22nd, 2020. One day, uh, tomorrow, it'll be one year when this article came out. Portland Police Association President Daryl Turner lashed out at City Commissioner Joanne Hardesty after she said that she believes Portland police officers started fires during protests in order to justify attacking. Yes, you heard that right. This is a city commissioner saying she thinks police officers started fires during the protests so they could justify attacking. If that's the case, do you think there might be a little bit of video footage out there? Do you think there's maybe a TikTok out there? Maybe, maybe a YouTube video by somebody, maybe a live stream that's on YouTube of the police, Portland Police Bureau officers starting said fires. Hey, watch them start a fire and then hammer on the protesters. Let's watch that video. Why don't you go tee up that video for me? I'll give you a second. Tell you what, I'm just going to ruin the fun. I'm a spoiler alert. There aren't any videos. Cause it didn't happen that way. It didn't go down that way. In an interview with Marie Claire magazine, right? Oh, Marie Claire, that was published Wednesday. Hardesty said, she has no doubt in my mind that Portland police are lying about the damage or starting the fires themselves so that they have justification for attacking community members. And by community members, you mean people from outside of the community all dressed, dressed in black. Those community members? You know how I know that? Cause I was there for a night. I was there. I watched it happen. I watched them dismantle a brand new fence, massive fence put up around the federal building. I watched them destroy community property. I watched a community statue burn, still burning. I walked into a bathroom that had a public restroom that had the most damage I have ever seen in a public restroom. I watched somebody shoot out a security camera with a paintball gun. I mean, this is one night. This is one night, right? I was there. I was like there, video of it. So if you, if you've got video of police officers starting a fire, I've, I would love to see that. But it didn't happen, right? Portland Police Bureau Chief Chuck Lovell told Marie Claire in an email response that Hardesty's statement strains credulity. It's not credible at all. The, this allegation is completely false. So you actually have to have the police chief get in, I don't know why this is up, get into this kind of topic. It's like, why are we addressing this? Oh, because the commissioner said it and she's, she doesn't know what she's talking about. Turner, who had been outspoken in his condemnation of the protesters and his frustration with city leaders, released a fiery statement Wednesday afternoon. Politicians bent on power perpetuating misinformation and untruths are just as guilty of using their privilege to hijack this movement as the rioters who are committing violent acts, burning and looting. Whew, that is, that is a shot. That is shots fired, right? Keep in mind, this is over a year ago when things were just really getting going. With statements like this, it's become completely clear that Commissioner Hardesty is part of the problem in Portland. And that's why I'm doing this podcast. She is, totally is. If Commissioner Hardesty has evidence of her outlandish accusation, she should immediately produce it. Of course, there is no such evidence. There's no YouTube videos or there's no, there's just not anything at all, right? There's nothing. This is just one more example of Commissioner Hardesty putting her personal political agenda ahead of the best interests of the citizens of Portland. She's content just to see them get shot up. That's the bottom line. Because she talks about it. Oh, isn't that terrible? But doesn't really do anything. Not doing anything, not doing anything constructive. Cause those numbers are going up. They're not going down, right? Turner said he has invited elected officials to stand at the front during the protests and no one, including Hardesty, has accepted the invite. Why do you think that is? Hmm. Yeah. Why is that? Why are the politicians not going to the front of the protests? Cause they would realize it's an incredible shit show. That's the bottom line. That it's, they, they can't be there. Cause if they're there, then they have to take responsibility for the stuff that goes down at these quote unquote peaceful protests that are basically, they're violent riots. But the whole narrative last year was, oh, these peaceful protesters, they're just being maligned by the police officers. No, that's not really how it went down. All right. So earlier Wednesday, during the Portland City Council meeting, Hardesty said Turner continues to lie to the public on a daily basis about the lack of cooperation of Portland police personnel. It just makes me crazy, she said, when I see people who are sworn to protect and serve continuing to lie to the public. What are they lying about? Where's the lie? Show me where the lie is. Again, show me a YouTube video of an officer lying. I'd love to see it. Hardesty also said, Portland Police Bureau is ultimately responsible for the federal officers being deployed to Portland. Let's see, let's work that one through for just a moment. The local police department, Portland Police Bureau is responsible for the federal officers being deployed to Portland. Okay. Well, I mean, let's, let's just give that a shot and let me be clear. The opening came for 45 and in quotes, it's got Trump to send in this malicious squad because of the over aggressive actions of Portland police. No, it's because you wouldn't contain the violent rioters. That's what happened. We cannot put the blame totally on this federal secret police force. Well, the, the federal police force wasn't secret and they were there protecting federal buildings. That is what they do. And the politicians in Portland, they didn't do anything. The blame should rest entirely on Portland Police Bureau and their lack of de-escalation skills, their lack of ability to engage communities where they are, and their lack of desire to protect Portlanders who are under fire every single night. Now I'd say they did a pretty good job, given the skills, the skill set that they are allowed to work with. And miraculously, since we're starting to incarcerate people, we're starting to sentence people to, you know, some decent sentences for some of the crazy stuff that happened last summer. And I'm going to read an article about that. So you know, I'm just not running at the mouth like a real estate guy. You know, we've got, uh, situations where I'm, I'm not really seeing much from our fine friends and in all, you know, dressed in black. Haven't seen much from them lately. Huh. Is it mainly because we just told them, hey, you know, if you guys could cut that down? Or maybe it's because we are finally arresting them and it's getting to the point where we're prosecuting enough of them, taking them off the streets, making a statement that if you do this kind of horse crap, we're going to arrest you and you're probably going to get sentenced to something other than a small misdemeanor. So Commissioner Hardesty was added that she was appalled that the Portland Police Bureau reiterated her desire to manage the police bureau. So we have a better police bureau tomorrow. She later issued an apology for her comments during the city council meeting, but not specifically for the statements in the Marie Claire article. Today I let my emotions get the most of me during council and the comment I made to the press, but I'm angry, frustrated and horrified by what has happened in these past 50 days. Well, why don't you do something about it then? I'm angry that even as a city commissioner, I'm coming up against countless barriers from protecting protesting Portlanders from the deluge of tear gas, pepper spray and other munitions on a nightly basis. Well, you know, the deluge of tear grass, it's not that bad. You can watch my video. It's not that bad. Man up, just get over it. Pepper spray. Okay. You're not going to die from that. It's not that big of a deal. And other munitions on a nightly basis. Well, why do we have those on a nightly basis? Because you've got a riot on your hands that local officials in Portland are doing nothing to stop. They did nothing to stop. Every night I'm terrified that someone will be killed because of an officer's inability to de-escalate or walk away from a situation. Well, who did end up getting killed? I think it was a Trump supporter. He got murdered in cold blood, walking down the street in Portland. That happened. So you're right. But that wasn't due to an officer's inability to de-escalate or walk away from a situation. Now that was somebody from Antifa, Antifa capped a Trump supporter. That's what happened there. And then the police hunted that Antifa member down and, or Black Lives Matter. I can't even remember which one it was. And then gotten in a gunfight and guy got killed. That's what happens when you get in a gunfight with police. Or my worst fear that those who seek to discredit protests are helping initiate it. All right. She acknowledged that as a public servant, I need to be careful making statements out of misinformation. Yes, you do. You're making them a lot. We all have bad days, but most of them don't happen publicly. Well, that's why I think people have an issue with what you're doing. Cause you're saying stuff that doesn't make sense. Portland Police Bureau setting fire so that they can hammer on the protesters? That, that, that's a large, large stretch. That's more than a stretch. That's a massive jump between logic, massive jump with no supporting evidence whatsoever. I've always said that we can disagree without being disagreeable. But today I did not meet that standard and I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, the game doesn't work that way. You make those statements, you live with them. That's on you. Sorry. Saying sorry doesn't count at all. Not, not taking it. So Portland Police shows lower percentage of patrol officers than surrounding departments. This is, this is ongoing. We just know, um, what we're talking about here is boots on the ground. If we had 10 cops on that corner and why don't we? Well, here's why we don't. Portland Police Bureau has more than 500 sworn officers, but not all of them are on patrol. As the bureau continues to lose staff, officers say, this could impact everyone. Could or is? I would probably go out on a limb and say, this is impacting everyone. Now the Portland Police Bureau is reevaluating options for patrols. They've moved officers from other duties to increase that patrol presence, trying to address safety challenges throughout the city. Over the last weekend, they moved officers to high traffic neighborhoods like downtown where the, where you've got these shootings going on. You only got so many cops and Portland is undermanned. So you move them to downtown, you're taking them away from somewhere else. You move them to homicide where you've moved a handful. I think they've got 16. They're looking for 18. That means you're pulling them from some other department. Cause you don't have enough new cops coming in, in the Portland Police Bureau to make up for the ones that are leaving. The ones that are quitting, they're moving elsewhere. They're just, they're gone. They're out of it. Portland horrible place to be a cop. Who wants to be a cop there? I mean, situation I saw when I was there, it was like, okay, yep, wouldn't want to be a cop here. And this, when I went down there, it was during the time of, well, Trump is sending in the secret, uh, federal officers. And it was just this harebrained deal going on. No, he wasn't sending them in to just, you know, scoop up the protesters and arrest them and, you know, unmarked cars. It was just this whole narrative that made no sense at all. And what it was, is there's these federal buildings that the peaceful protesters who are not so peaceful were hammering on. And the way I know this is I walked up and asked a cop and was like, hey, what's going on here? And he goes, you see that big federal building there? They believe it or not have cameras in those windows. And what they do is they wait for people to do bad stuff to the building. They film them and then they go out and talk to them. That's what the secret police were doing. They were hunting down people committing crimes against the federal building. That is what the federal police, the federal officers do. That's what they do. That's why they're called federal. Crazy stuff, right? And so you don't have enough cops on the ground to really make a difference. Not to really make a difference, but you don't have enough cops in the ground to, you know, go and, and make that huge 10 cop on the corner difference. They're spread too thin. Don't have enough cops. You defund into them. Here you are. Deal with it. So you're going to have these, you know, storylines of, oh geez. Did you have that whole defunding the police thing? Not looking good. How is that working out for you? Not looking good, is it? It's, uh, it's problematic at best. And we are struggling to come up with explanations for, you know, said violence that we can attribute to something other than people are just shooting each other left and right. And let's blame the guns. Blame the guns. It's the guns fault. There's too many, there's too many guns in, in, in circulation. It's not the guns fault. It's the people pulling those triggers. Pulling those triggers. Otherwise guns don't just miraculously hop up and shoot somebody, do they? They don't. It's, it's getting to the people who are doing the shooting and those people, they are not taking out permits. Invariably in these stories, read these stories closely. How often are they, well, it was a stolen gun. It was a stolen gun. They were arrested also for possession of a stolen firearm, stolen gun, stolen gun, stolen gun. These are not guys going to Walmart saying, hey, I want, I want a Remington eight 70 express. No. So the people committing these crimes, they are not waiting in line to get a license. They are not waiting in line to fill out appropriate paperwork. They're not doing any of that. Why? Well, a good portion of them have felony records. And you know, it's, it's not within your probation terms to have a gun in your possession if you are a felon. That's a thing, believe it or not. So many of these arrests you read and go, okay, possession of a stolen gun and they had a felony. And yeah, they were not allowed to have a firearm. No, that's not going to be good for them. So you know, the whole firearm thing, don't blame the firearms. Got to blame the people pulling those triggers. That's kind of where you're at. So, so for a city of 650,000, here's a quote, uh, we don't have, and we haven't had for years. That's not new either. Enough police officers. We're way below where we should be and where the community deserves the police department to, to receive the kind of service the community deserves, and we wish we could provide. Calls for service in Portland just in the month of June topped 20,000. That's about seven times the amount of calls in Tyger. They're talking about another good sized city in the city of, uh, in the state of Oregon. They're just kind of making some comparisons here. Portland is undermanned, has way too many calls and they don't have the ability to put 10 cops in the corner, let alone one cop on the corner. That's what we're saying. And if we had more cops on the streets, I bet you And if we had more cops on the streets, I bet you'd see a reduction in the number of said violent crimes happening. So let's see what else we can grab from here. Yeah, calls. So calls for Portland, 20,610. Hillsborough, another big city in Oregon, 6,124. Tygerd, 2,899. So Portland is just, they are the front runner in 911 calls. I mean, they're way out ahead. They are leading the charge in this effort. Um, yeah. So here's, here's where we end this little topic right here. The Portland Police Bureau said it will take a concentrated effort to grow the amount of patrol officers in the year ahead. Hmm, okay. I am going to agree with that one, wholeheartedly. Cause you're, you're battling the whole defund the police, abolish the police. That was a thing. How did that work out for you, those who supported that? How did, how is that working out? How's your community doing? Are crime rates down? Oh, they're not. Hmm, yeah. What happened there? Hmm, not good. You know, we need things to go the other way. And it's going to take a long time because you're not through with all the officers quitting yet. You're not through with that. I've, I've had people from Portland Fire, I've had from people from the Portland Police Bureau email me consistently saying, hey, here's what I'm hearing. And that's a lot of what I bring to the table here is just, I've got some, you know, channels going on and people are like, yeah, here's the numbers that we're kind of seeing internally. Or I'm hearing scuttlebutt, maybe I'm retired, those kinds of things. I get pieces of information passed along there. And these are not hard topics to report on. You've had this trend of fewer cops for years. And now you've got a real reason, a number of real reasons for cops to want to quit. And they're quitting and they're going to places because city leadership didn't have their back at all. As you can see by the statements from Commissioner Hardesty. Yeah, those guys, they're not helping out. They're setting fires so they can hammer on the activists. Huh. Wow. Uh, yeah. Problematic at best, right? Okay. So here's the dessert. Let's finish up. Let's finish up on a happy note. Portland man gets four year sentence for setting fire, throwing a Molotov cocktail during protest. These are those stories you saw. Now they are coming to fruition and these are the, yeah, we're throwing them in jail for a while. People are actually getting sentences. A Portland man was sentenced to four, four years in prison. Good. I have typically been recommending five years. Five years, that's just me, because I throw out a number that I think four, too minimal. 10 for starting a fire. Okay, but that is kind of, you know, here in Seattle, we had, uh, the protesters, the activists literally setting fire to a police precinct and trying to quick read them in. Quick read the door closed so that they would burn up. But then that was considered not attempted murder because there were other doors for said police officers to get out of. There were other exit opportunities. That is literally the logic we're dealing with there. Oh, that's not murder. That's not that bad. Uh, you know, they tried to set a fire in the police precinct, but you know, didn't hurt anybody. It's all good. So man was sentenced to four years in prison Monday after pleading guilty to setting fire to the Multnomah County Justice Center and throwing a Molotov cocktail at officers during a protest in September, officials said. Cyan Bass, now 22, pleaded guilty to all five charges, including first degree arson, first degree assault, unlawful possession of an explosive device. The Multnomah County District Attorney's Office said in a statement. I'm glad he's going to jail. I hope he's there for longer than four years. Bass originally pleaded not guilty in federal court in October. He was then charged in Multnomah County Circuit Court. His co-defendant Hannah Lilly of Portland pleaded guilty in February to her role in helping Bass damage the justice center. Lilly, now 22, was ordered to perform community service and pay the city $46,000 in restitution. Good. Now these people that have screwed themselves royally at the beginning of their adult life, they've got some lessons to learn. They can either go one of two ways in the direction that they're heading in now. If they're doing this kind of crap at age 21, I'm going to say they're going to have a tough time moving forward in life. You've got a criminal record. This is the folks that you're associating with are people setting fire and throwing Molotov cocktails. That is not the direction I would probably encourage my offspring to head in. I don't know about you, but that's, I'm a no go on that type of thing. The duo's charges stemmed from an incident the night of September 23rd, 2020, when Bass and Lilly were outside the justice center protesting a Kentucky grand jury's decision not to charge three Louisville police officers in the killing of Breonna Taylor. Bass used a wrist rocket slingshot to damage the building's windows, then used flammable liquid to set plywood lining the building on fire, resulting in an estimated $46,000 in damages, prosecutors said. Bass ran towards the nearby Chapin and Lonsdale Squares. So Chapin and Lonsdale Squares are literally across the street and kind of kitty corner from the justice department that we're talking about. As they ran toward the park, as police officers tried to disperse the crowd, then they ignited a Molotov cocktail and threw it in the direction of the officers, prosecutors said. Police declared a riot that night and arrested 13 people, including Bass and Lilly. It doesn't say anything about the Portland Police Bureau setting fires, does it? It doesn't say, doesn't, doesn't say anything there. That's, that's, that's not a thing. These people were acting on their own, um, and they kind of did all this stuff. And now they're going to, to prison. And I'm glad, I am happy to hear that. And if they screw up in prison and they end up there for like 10 years, I'd be okay with that because then they're off the streets. They're off the streets. Take those people off the streets. Should have been doing this a year and whatever ago. But political leadership said, ah, no, they're peaceful protesters. Never mind the damage they're doing on a nightly basis to Portland and businesses in Portland. You think businesses in Portland are having a tough time getting people into downtown? Yes, yes, they are. That's a thing. Cause political leadership in Portland basically just didn't have the cops back and let this kind of nonsense go. But now we're finally arresting people and throwing them in jail. And that's where they belong. All right. That's the dessert for today. That's the dessert. So yeah, we talked about, um, you know, politicians making ridiculous statements, cops making statements that are blindingly obvious that, yeah, that's probably true. True, but nobody seems to want to listen to the cops. They want to listen to ridiculous politicians that say stuff that makes no sense at all. And, um, yep, we don't have enough cops on the streets to keep the city of Portland safe. That's an ongoing thing. And, um, yeah, finally justice is catching up with some of these protesters slash activists that did some stuff that didn't really go in their favor. Got arrested, they're in prison. Okay. That's where we're at. That is where we're at. That's the, that's the, uh, state of the union. How's that? Okay. That's it for me. I'm out of here on this one. I hope you enjoyed those storylines. You guys typically send me, you know, all this stuff and that's where I kind of pick and choose. All right, five people sent me that one. All right, that's, that's what I'm going to do. Give the people what they want. Thanks so much for being here. Thanks so much for being a part of the Seattle Real Estate Podcast. I will catch up with you soon on the next one. We're releasing two a day, Monday through Friday, one a day on Saturday and Sunday. Until then, stay safe and I'll catch up with you then. Bye.
Don't forget to subscribe to our channel and hit the notification bell so you'll know when our next video is out.